All right. I hereby call to order this meeting of the Planning Board Tuesday, October 4th, 2016 at 6 o'clock. Is there anyone here that wants to speak to something that's not on the agenda today? Go ahead. Do you want to come up and state your name and where you live in town, if you live in town?
Hi. My name is Mindy Cotherman. I recently purchased a property at 132 West Street in East Hampton, formerly known as Touchstone Farm. It's a beautiful piece of property, and I purchased it with a business partner in hopes that the city would allow us to make a cabin-oriented campground there. However, we've come to a little bit of a roadblock due to some city zoning. And I've spoken a couple of times to Jessica about this, so if she pipes in, please allow her that. The campground falls under the community facilities in your zoning of the R-35 property that I live in, and that would make us have to be a nonprofit, and we would like to run as a for-profit campground so that we could pay taxes to the city and not have to look for any tax exemptions.
So what Mindy is getting at is that I'd like to work with the board to try to put together a zoning change. Community facilities is one of these umbrella terms in the table of uses, and we have a lot of uses underneath it. The way that the zoning defines community facilities is that these entities have to be either governmental or nonprofit entities in order to meet the community facility's definition. However, there's a lot of uses under there that could be for-profit. The hospital's listed under there, nursing home, and we have solar facilities that are listed under there as a community facility, which are typically for-profit structures, that they're the lease agreement, and somebody's making money off of that. And so I think it'd be worthwhile for the board to consider a possible zone change, and we can add it to the agenda next meeting for a discussion, a more formal discussion. But as we know in the past, that when it comes to zoning changes, it's always helps the process along when we have a business that's directly impacted. If you go back to residential kitchens, and now we have small ovens sort of as a result of changing the zoning to allow residential kitchen, and it allows that economic growth to happen in the city. And so I'd like to request that the board puts it, put it on the agenda for the next meeting, and Mindy and her business partners would like to participate in that process to sort of move it along so that they can move forward with their business and that this definition that was called out by the building inspector, who's also the zoning enforcement officer, identified as an issue. So.
I think that, I think Jessica's right. We can put this on the agenda for our next meeting.
Anyone else? Seems totally good. One quick question. I just want to make sure I understand. You're suggesting a large zoning change, the zoning itself, not an exemption for the specific case.
We can't just exempt it. We don't have that ability to do that. She'd have to go for variance to the zoning board of appeals, and we don't have use variances as it is. So it's a pretty simple change. It's either, and we can discuss this at the next meeting, would either modifying the definition or striking the definition, and I think that would solve it. And in the meantime, I'll reach out to the city attorney and get some feedback from him as well.
Thanks for coming up today.
Thank you.
Looks like we'll be seeing you next meeting.
Yep, it sounds like it.
Anyone else from the public that wants to speak on something not on the agenda? All right. The next item we have here is the minutes from September 20th. Has everyone had a chance to review those minutes?
Yes.
Any modifications or changes, requests? I have an extra copy here if anyone wants to read.
My name was spelled right.
I moved to approve the, what, did you say your name was spelled wrong?
No, I said my name was spelled right.
Okay.
How unusual, yeah.
I moved to approve the minutes from the September 20th, 2016 meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? No, it's unanimous? Okay. So our first item here is an A and R for Pomeroy Street with Donald Zykowski. Do you want to come up and tell us about it? If you don't want to come up, I think it's fine if you say your name. It's up to you.
ANR's right in front of you.
Good evening. My name is Donald Zykowski, lifelong resident of East Hampton, and live on 86 Pomeroy Street. The land's been in the family approximately 60 years, and it's just time to sell a couple of lots off, and that's what we're doing. And we're gonna, that's about it. Because we're gonna sell a lot, and then somebody's gonna build a house. And good luck to them.
Okay. So you're requesting endorsement for one building lot. Do you want to come over here and show me on this map maybe what? Come over here and show us.
I can't hear you. I have hearing impairment. That's my problem.
Sorry. I'll try to speak up. Come on over here and show us, show us what we're looking at.
Yeah.
Just the frontage? Just to be honest, lot four.
Borders Southampton?
Yeah. It's extra lots there, yeah.
Okay. So this is the one?
Yep.
And the frontage here is 120?
Huh?
It's 120 feet of frontage there?
Yeah, 120 feet of frontage. Holmberg did it, so everything is legal, and it's zoned properly, so I don't see what is any problem.
Anyone have any questions? Okay. Nothing? So is there a motion to endorse?
I think a motion to endorse, what's it, Pomeroy Street, lot, what was that, lot four?
Yeah, lot four.
Lot four.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any against or abstentions? It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Jess, what do I need to sign here? I have a pencil, not a pen, so I might need a pen.
I can remember where you lived on it.
What is that?
Sign. You have to sign the Mylar. Don, how many cop, Don? Don?
How many copies do you need?
Don, how many, how many copies do you need? Do you need one?
I need the Mylar, and I need maybe two, three.
You need three. Okay.
Might as well keep enough for yourself.
Right here, friend. The decision you like. Yep.
Can I have one? So how you been doing?
How many? All of them? Is that what you said?
He wants three, plus the Mylar.
Is that working?
I haven't been doing it. I got a couple of problems up, and you got me running here, running there.
Appreciate that.
I think Bernie wouldn't wait and pick one. Have a bad, good argument. Have you ever gotten?
This is in and out. I need.
That's unusual.
Into that one. That's weird.
Oh, this is, this is.
Thank you.
I need to sign another.
I need two. One for planning, one for city planning.
Not that important.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sorry. I was just close to walking away from that. Do you need to?
I know you, you will.
Okay. All right, let's move forward.
You just realized this is my old seat. You know what's happened. You make the mistake.
All right. Off you go.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you. All right. Now we have a site plan approval for Five Chapman Ave with Michael Berra. It's a request to amend an existing site plan for your restaurant. Come on up.
Good evening. How you guys doing tonight? So my last site plan approval with you guys was contingent upon me renting a couple parking spaces from an adjoining neighbor. That neighbor has declined to rent me parking spaces, so that's why I'm before you.
I remember that.
I still have an easement to that parking lot. You know, at five of 10 when I drove over here, there was four cars on Chapman Ave from Manchester Hardware down to Rite Aid. There were three cars on Union. And I still have access to that parking lot. As far as designated signs, the building department wanted me to do a handicap space, so I had to paint one of them into a handicap space. And that, although the previous property owner I had an agreement with, the current property owner declined for an official lease for those parking spaces.
For the sake of the cameras, can we recap some of what we talked about in our last discussion? Your, it's a restaurant?
Yes. I'm also doing a small restaurant. It's 800 square feet, seats 30 patrons.
It's a smokehouse?
Yep. Yep. So it's gonna be a little smokehouse barbecue. It's very tiny. I live on-site, so it's actually in the back of my building, on my property. So it's tiny, it's accessible both from the Union Court parking lot, and it's also accessible from Chapman Avenue.
Since we're talking specifically about a change to parking, and this came up recently, can I ask, does everyone remember this case that came before?
I was not at this meeting, so I read what was included in the materials for today, but I did not see the minutes from the previous meeting.
Probably gonna have to go through a lot of that again, then, I think.
So it sounds like we're talking about parking. Was the condition, was that necessary in order to meet code?
Well, actually, I'm exempt from any parking regulations.
That's what I thought.
I'm exempt. But I am the, my downtown business-owned property is the last one on my street that's owned downtown business, and then it turns to residential.
Got it.
So as a concession to the neighborhood, I was gonna rent some off-site parking, which I still have access to, but as far as renting them with designated signs, that was declined on my behalf.
Can we, can you, just for the sake of getting this out here, about how many seats are we talking about?
The restaurant seats roughly 30 people.
30 people.
But I am looking to harness more of a neighborhood environment. I'm looking for a lot of pedestrian traffic more than.
And you do have access, I remember there was a walkway that led to, was that common?
Yes. I do have an easement and a walkway to Union Court parking. And then also from Chapman Avenue, there's a separate handicap-accessible sidewalk that would go to the front of the building.
And how many staff were you talking about having on?
Three. It's a tiny, like here again, it's an 800-square-foot facility, and that, you know, by the time you throw in two bathrooms and a commercial kitchen, the space gets really, really tiny fast.
And deliveries?
They'll be accessible from Chapman Avenue. I mean, they're already driving semis up and down the street for deliveries to Shelburne Falls Coffee, for instance.
And what is the building currently?
It is currently a single-family home.
Single-family home.
Yeah. The last time there was a business in the building was about 20 years ago. I mean, I've owned it, I've owned the building for 15 years, but yeah, there used to be a business in it, but not since I've owned it.
So exempt, but if the board has concerns, Jessica?
Yes.
May you help me with this? The situation is, as was just discussed, was that he's exempt from parking requirements.
Yes.
Which would make this seem a no-brainer. The exemption comes from where?
The exemption comes from, in the zoning, under the parking section, section 10.11, or structure in existence prior to 1973, which is enlarged or a use in existence prior to 1973, shall be required to provide parking in accordance with the following tables unless increase your units or measurements amounts to less than 25 percent. So, and for the downtown business and mill use industrial districts only, no additional off-street parking or loaning is required for the continued use or reuse of a building in existence prior to 1973, as long as that use or reuse does not increase the total floor area within the building. So as long as there's not, you know, an addition put onto the building in the building is prior 1973, they can qualify for the parking exemption in downtown or the mill industrial districts.
Which we clarified too in talking about at the last meeting, that you qualify for that assumption.
And then actually, for my first site plan approval for the property, the planning board asked me to take off 550 square feet of my building to get access to that parking lot behind me, to Union Court. So I did remove that. So that does alleviate, so actually instead of increasing my footprint, I've actually decreased it to allow access.
Okay, so.
So what I think the board needs to determine here is why, you need to remember why you conditioned it to begin with, and what, where did you render that decision in terms of why you were requiring him to have off-site based on your last meeting and your last permit?
Got it.
And whether that is still relevant or not, or if the board determines that this condition is no longer needed because you feel satisfied with the situation.
Okay. Do you guys, does anyone, you were here as well. Do you have any recollection? I mean, I remember us being concerned about the number of people that were sitting there in potential restaurants.
That was the big thing. It wasn't the parking, it was the number in the buildings.
Inside, yeah.
And I think it, I think you had more in the beginning, more than that.
Yes.
And you reduced it to the 30 people.
As, as the layout's going back and forth between the architect and the health department, yeah, things are getting smaller quickly.
So the previous decision, let me read you what the description was of the application. The site contains an existing 2,889-square-foot building currently under residential use and listed as a duplex in the assessor's database. The applicant is seeking approval for a restaurant to seat 32 to 36 patrons. The applicant will utilize 778 square feet of the first floor for a restaurant, including a 201 square-foot dining room, 367 square-foot bar dining area, and 210 square-foot kitchen and bathroom. The applicant will also have two patios on the west and east side of the property totaling 1,690 square feet and to be used for outdoor dining. Entrance exit to the indoor restaurant would be accessed through these patios. Existing driveway will be used for employee parking. Additional off-street parking will be provided through a lease agreement with the property owner of Union Corp. parcel 52-67, which abuts the subject property to the north. So.
As you recall, that was supposed to be four or five spots?
It was four.
It was four? And now that's the part that's gone, and you had intended that for customers?
Yes.
Would you like to look at the site plan again? Would that be helpful?
That would be really helpful, thank you.
Was that something that the board added, or that you came to the plan board saying, I anticipate being able to do this, so then it was just added?
I hadn't originally, the previous property owner, but the previous designated parking isn't, oh, there's a colored one here somewhere, that one. So this is, so this is the parking lot directly behind my building. So I have a walkway. So it was supposed to be these four spaces right here.
Okay.
So in the decision, it says the vehicular and pedestrian movement within the site and in relationship to adjoining ways was adequate as the property is owned downtown business and does not require off-street parking. The board found no concerns with the four off-street parking spots to be leased off-site at 37 to 43 Union Street, owned by East Hampton Madahav LLC, as permitted under section 10.132 of the East Hampton zoning ordinance. Pedestrian access would be from the sidewalk on Chapman Avenue or from the sidewalk from Union Court.
Okay. So it sounds, just like what you said, you brought it to us in the ruling that it wasn't that we required it. Instead, we saw no problems with that addition being in there. It was cherry on top of the ice cream. So given that that's the case and that he's exempt, I think that the board has no additional finding here unless someone has, has an issue.
I have no problem amending the, we'd have to amend the permit to remove that condition?
You're amending the, yes. So the history is that he had, he previously had a permit that was from 2010, which expired, which then he needed to come back to the board to get the permit since it had expired. So he received the permit in May 2016, and the only condition, no, there are two conditions. One was applicant shall lease four off-street parking spaces and make patrons aware of the availability of the off-street parking. Evidence of the parking lease agreement shall be provided to the planning department and building department prior to the granting of a certificate of occupancy. And the applicant shall comply with board of health regulation, requirements and regulations, and will obtain all needed licenses and permits.
So an amendment would strike the first two conditions? Is that essentially?
It would strike the first condition in regards to the off-street parking. It's not gonna strike the board of health requirements.
No, that's the third. It was a second, forgive me. Okay. So it would be a motion to strike, to amend the special permit?
It's not a special permit, it's a site plan approval.
To amend the site plan approval?
You're amending the existing site plan, so there would be a new decision that's drafted. We've done amendments in the past with other applications. I can't think which exactly they are right now at this time. Off the map was one of them in terms of change of location. There's been others. I can't remember off the top of my head, but.
We amend the site plan approval as presented.
For Five Chapman?
For Five Chapman, and that'll only take care of section one, not the board of health.
Correct. And so just for the decision, I need an understanding of what your finding is in terms of, to strike that condition. So, because I had to run out to get the whole file. So if you could just.
I'll throw this out. You guys can help me.
Reiterate what the finding is that allows you to eliminate the condition?
The finding is that the requirement was exempted. Isn't that simple enough?
Yeah, it was exempt at the beginning.
Additional parking is not required under the zoning ordinance because the property's.
But it wasn't, so you need to understand that it wasn't required previously, but you did require it. So there was a reason why you required it. So you need to remember what that reason was. And I actually honestly think it was tied to his previous application from 2010, and that there was concerns presented at that time by the fire department that the street was not wide enough. And at that point, you had required, I think, a condition of the permit was to provide off-street parking. Correct me if any of this is incorrect, but I believe, I wasn't here at the time in 2010, but that was my understanding, is that the condition about the four off-street parkings was in the 2011 decision, January 2011.
And that was in regards to the second story of the home I was gonna turn into a bed and breakfast. And that was, part of that was, that parking was to provide overnight parking for the guests that would be in the bed and breakfast.
So is the police department that had, who had supplied concerns about on-street parking in 2011. However, neither the fire department nor the police department provided any concerns during the last permit in 2016. So, you know, his permit, this permit expired. Technically, you really can't be pulling from that discussion. You need to be looking at it as a new application and a new permit because some of the use has changed. You're not having the bed and breakfast like previously thought. So since nobody provided comments, I think in 2016, and there's been no expressed concerns from any other departments, you know, that's another.
As to why it should have been carried over?
I'm just trying, yeah, I'm just trying to provide you the history of how it came to this.
So, so the finding then, a would-be, that would the?
That the use has changed since the, since the original application in 2010, and no comments were received.
And the dining area is smaller than originally implied for.
Yeah, it is small.
Just trying to cover illegally, that's all.
Grateful for it. Do you feel you have enough?
I think so.
Okay. So I believe Chet had a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All against or any abstentions? It's unanimous.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time. Have a great night.
All right.
Will we second that, Libby?
I do.
Would you please pass that back to us? All righty. Next, we have administrative items. The Industrial Manufacturing Permitting Requirements Report. That was a fun read. It's almost 57 pages of joy, but it looked like something that was important and essential. Who wants to take, I saw your name was on it, too.
I just came to, there was a public forum that was held for business owners mostly, and I just sat in on that, on that reading. That was led by the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission.
My understanding is that you helped put forward this request?
Yes, I'm passing it down.
I sort of took from it, Jessica, two main points. One is about increasing our costs because they're way too low, and the other was about by right uses for some thing. Did I get that right? Is there more?
Yep. I think that's, you know, so the big thing, and this is a lot of what the business owners talked about at the forum, and the staff from PBPC also talked about from their experience in Westfield, when he was the city planner in Westfield, is, you know, when you're looking at industrial manufacturing uses in industrial manufacturing zone, those are the types of uses that are, you're directing to those areas, and so you shouldn't be putting additional burdens permitting-wise for an industrial use in industrial zone. However, there is this understanding that those are the types of uses that potentially cause the biggest nuisance issues in terms of smoke, air, noise, lighting, traffic, deliveries, all of that stuff. And so there needs to be some, it can't just be a by-right use that goes in without any sort of review process, that there needs to be some review process in terms of the site plan. So site plan approval is by right uses that have some review process by the board, so that you can look at all those different criteria that are in the, that are in the zoning that we look at, traffic, parking, noise, blah, blah, blah. But it still allows the use to be by right. So there's no chance, there's no risk involved by a business. So a lot of businesses may shy away from coming into a community because they don't want to go through the special permit process. They're worried about massive pushback from the public, you know, that risk involved. So there's a delicate balance that you need to have. And by allowing a site plan approval process for industrial uses in industrial zones, still is that happy medium where there's still some level of review, but it is less of an issue for a business to feel like they're taking a risk by spending the engineering money and the pre-development money to go into a community. So it's that, kind of that balance between the two. And that's part of what this report was talking about.
And you looked at many other surrounding communities to see what.
They did. They compared us to, I think, eight different communities in terms of how we permit industrial manufacturing uses.
One of them, I seem to recall, had costs that were, my eyes opened. I think it were $2,000 to $5,000 on one of them. And we were $100.
We're $100.
In terms of how you want to proceed with this, I think it's clear we need to do something about that. What do you, what do you have in mind?
So there was a recommendation in the end about, it was H2, I think, that identifying everybody involved in the processing, reviewing of the plans, applications, and on average how much time's involved for each person, including site visits and meetings, not including only hourly wages, but also any benefits packages, which didn't occur to me, and then looking at possibly a tiered fee schedule depending on how big of an impact. So we had talked about this before, but there's some special permits that, you know, might take maybe one or two hours of my time pre-meeting before it even gets to the board, and then processing the application. But for bigger, more contentious projects that have a lot of public input coming in, I'm, and having additional data that's being supplemented every meeting, I'm gathering that information, I'm getting it out to the board, I'm making sure there's copies in the file in the city clerk's office. So there's a lot of administrative time for me. The more information that's coming in, and all of the public comments, you know, I gotta timestamp those, I keep those in the file. So, and records have to be disseminated to the board. So now that we're doing things electronically, it saves some time because it's just a one-time, move it over to the Dropbox, and we're good to go. But it does take time, and then getting comments from the departments and stuff. So all of that takes time, and that's what I'm doing behind the scenes before it even gets to you, filing legal notifications, doing a butter notifications, working with the applicant, answering any questions they might have prior to coming here. So.
I have two questions for you. One is that it mentioned, and you just mentioned, taking into account your time, benefits. Is there a process that you're starting to do that to try and calculate what you're?
I haven't at all, but I'll have to, I'll have to start trying to track a little bit better how much time it takes me to process these.
The other was that I noticed one of the communities, I think it might have been Northampton, forgive me if I'm misquoting, but in addition to having higher rates for square footage on the upper-level properties, they charged in addition, I think it was five cents per square foot.
Per square foot, yeah.
Do you think that the square foot of the property has anything to do with how much time you spend?
I think sometimes it does. I mean, if it's a 30,000, like, think of Chemmettall. Chemmettall was a recent application that was, you know, we don't have a lot of new additions. We typically have a lot of reuse of existing buildings. That's often what we see. We don't generally see projects that are new projects on open land, because we don't have a lot of open land left to develop in East Hampton. So for a community like Westfield that's got a plethora of vacant, developable land, they are seeing projects every meeting that are new businesses, new, you know, larger, either big box stores or, you know, bigger development proposals. We saw Chemmettall, I think, was the biggest thing we've seen. That was a 30,000-square-foot expansion of an existing plant, and that took a couple meetings, and there was multiple packets that came through. You know, even the solar energy took a couple meetings. It was a new project on a vacant site. Those are the projects that take more time. If it's just a reuse of an existing building, there's no site to be looking at because the building's already there. You're just talking about the use. When you're talking, when you've got a vacant site with a new building, you're not only looking at the use and the impacts of the use, but how that development is being proposed, and how it impacts a butters and the neighborhood and all of that stuff.
So square footage is relevant, but not enough of a measure to get the whole picture?
Not always. Sometimes it's the use. There's, you know, the terminology is trip generation. So what, McDonald's is gonna have more traffic than maybe a 30,000-square-foot warehousing facility. So a lot of it depends on the types of traffic it's gonna generate based on its use. So that's another, another thing to consider, impact.
Anyone have any questions?
Yeah, there's like, there's like three or four things that are in there. I don't go along with whatsoever.
Okay.
I just think it's just plain, I thought I was looking at it starting my life, but it was goofy almost.
All right. So which one was it?
Yeah, which one? Developers are reluctant to go through a public hearing. Develops are reluctant to go through a public hearing process because of concerns that the process is prolonged. It doesn't take two months for an application to go through here. I can't understand where it even came from. When was the last time it took two months?
I read that as one of the assumptions of the study that like, this is what this group of people is always going to say and advocate for. Regardless, I don't think it was a value judgment on the statement. I think it was just a...
The assumption. So, so this had to, some of it had to do with a business that wanted to come into East Hampton and scheduled a meeting with myself, the mayor, and some others. And when they heard that they had to go through a special permit process, they freaked out. Because in other communities and their other experiences that they had, it had been a prolonged process. And so when I explained to them, we're pretty, you know, expedient, we do things quickly, we do things efficiently. As long as you do your job in providing the information, the board will be able to make their judgment calls. If you don't do your job as the applicant to provide the information, it will take time. So there is some burden on the applicant to make sure that they do their job providing information. So, so that's sort of the impetus of this entire study was this, this one company that was looking to come to East Hampton and said, oh my God, you have a special permit process. We're not sure we want to go through that. And so that's just a general assumption with a lot of businesses, to some extent, when they're looking at communities to relocate. If they have to go through a special permit process, they may choose another community that doesn't have that process. But I think there's a happy medium. Like I said before, you don't want to just sort of give the kitchen away, you know? You want to be able to, to, to form the development or frame the development so that it's not going to have a huge impact on the community, on the neighborhood. But you don't want, you don't want companies to just throw up their arms and say, we're not going there either just because there's a special permit process. And their experience in other communities have been, have been hard.
We've turned down one project in nine years. One. So it doesn't matter, if you're just going by...
Two.
Stop and Shop?
Two.
Who, who, who's the two?
Parsons. Stop and Shop.
Stop and Shop got passed.
The second time.
It got passed.
The second time.
It doesn't matter, it got passed.
The second time.
Still got passed.
I have a question. On the same topic, the, it says nearby communities. Chickapi requires a special permit issued by city council for particularly noxious uses?
Yes, that's, that's pretty common in a lot of communities. Springfield does that as well.
So I'm curious about that because that's the thing that seems to me, you know, we want to be the most careful with if we're changing the way we permit industrial uses is making sure that particularly noxious uses are still given enough to, you know...
It's generally not advised to allow city council to, to, to approve, to have special permits on projects.
I was more thinking about the, how do you define specially, particularly noxious uses? So that maybe we could maintain some oversight.
Like a casino or something, or, you know...
Yeah, because I...
There's some, in Springfield, the city council still retains a lot of control over planning, review, and projects. So...
Alright, I got another one here. Recommendation says when a project required multiple approvals from different boards and commissions, where practical, the project reviews and the public hearings should be joined, held jointly. We couldn't even, we couldn't even get a joint meeting with the Consular's Ordinance Committee because they couldn't get a quorum here. I can't imagine trying to meet with the conservation and ZBA or anybody else.
It wouldn't be easy.
Plus, plus a lot of where it finally become, before you even look at something, the conservation has to look at a piece of land to find out if it's even a pliable before you can even look at it. So they have to do their diligence on their project before we even look at it. And I can't imagine trying to join together.
They mention in there some communities that do that. I think Northampton is one. And they also mention that it can be very difficult to get them together because people don't, you know, the timing of it.
Yeah, and some cities' planning and conservation are one board, too.
Why, for anything, though, we can speed the process up.
Yeah, I mean, we can try.
That's great.
But I find that when conservation does their findings, and they're sent to us, and there's no issues, then our job is that much easier so that they don't have to come to us and say, this is how we came across that. As long as they send us something that says they're in compliance, I see no reason why they should. But I don't know about any other boards that we would want to meet with us that are pertaining to a project that we're dealing with at that time. If it involves zoning, then maybe zoning can join in our meeting. Because a lot of times, a lot of times they'll send us something, and we just say, no comment, and send it back to them, and they're doing the same with us. So, it's like, our board seemingly at some times could care less, and their board does the same thing.
Where it may end up being helpful, maybe, with a ZBA planning is that if there is, for some odd reason, you know, somebody needs to get a variance or something first to the ZBA, and then it goes to planning board. Maybe, you know, it would, it might be worth having a meeting so that everybody's at the same table. So either the variance is, I don't know. I'm not, I think it'll be hard, I think it'd be difficult to implement this, that recommendation, for sure.
I agree. And you have a good point.
The other piece in here that I think is worthwhile is this idea of pre-development meetings, which we actually held our first one per the applicant's request last week. And we had in the room, it was the applicants, myself, the health agent, the building inspector, fire, the mayor. I'm missing somebody.
Well, that sounds brilliant.
And it was great. And in a half hour, we were able to answer all of their permitting questions specifically about those jurisdictions. So the health agent was able to talk about what she needed to talk about and alert them to certain permits that they might not have known that they needed. I was able to talk to them about planning. The fire was there to be able to talk about whatever they needed to talk about. And having the mayor there was great, too, because then she could get a sense of what the project was and have a good... So, it's something that the mayor really wants to try to continue to do. And hopefully with these bigger projects, we can get folks together in their room as needed and that we're able to answer questions within a half hour.
Do you, you feel doing something like that would help businesses come into East Hampton when they know that something like that is happening?
Potentially. I mean, there's been a bit of a runaround, I think, with new businesses trying to, to get off... Yeah. Yeah, once the board recognizes you, sure. Go ahead.
Okay, please, go ahead.
Before I made an offer on the property that I did purchase, I actually came and spoke with Jessica. If I am able to get this property, can I, am I allowed to do this? And she said, yes, but you also need to talk to the board of health and Joe. But, and I think I spent two hours here one day, just back and forth. And then Joe had a question, so we talked to Jessica and Jack. It would be awesome if everyone was sitting in a room.
I...
Yeah, that would be the best thing for a new business coming in.
As long as you guys get it right, because if that happens and they think they prep it and then come in, so, you know, I think you guys could probably use a process plan for that.
Right. And I typically meet with, I would say ninety-five percent of the applicants, I pre-meet with them before they submit anything to the board.
Now, how does that affect costs to have the mayor in the room and the building inspector?
I don't know. I mean, it's, I just think it's something we feel like is the right thing to do, and it helps streamline the process, and it helps answer questions in a half hour rather than having somebody run around the office trying to track everybody down and getting conflicted. And there was one instance where the health agent questioned something and thought something was a concern, and the fire department corrected her and said, nope, that's, that's covered under the state law and it's all good to go. And she said, okay, great. So, you know, that, it was, those two conflicting opinions on something were hashed out right then and there, within thirty seconds, rather than having somebody go bombs back and forth between two offices.
Helping each other helps the town itself. The expense, I think, if it was an expense, would be well worth it if someone coming in right off the bat knows where to go, and this is what you have to do, here it is in black and white. And then they could leave stating, knowing what has to be done, rather than seeing you and then going to zoning or going to the health agent.
I would love to see something come of that. That's one piece I'd like to definitely see.
Mayor's pushing it.
It would help the planning board, for sure.
Yeah, it would help all the boards.
Well, actually, yes.
It would help everybody.
Speaking of having something come of this, what is the next step for this?
So, the next step, I think the first thing is for us to look at the fees. I think that's the easiest thing for us to do and the first thing that we should be doing. The bigger, the bigger challenge is going to be looking at the table of uses to look at special permit versus site plan approval. And I'm hoping that there'll be some grant money that's available to hire either PVPC or some other consultant to maybe do that for us, to have an outside entity because I don't necessarily have the time, unfortunately, to take it on myself. So PVPC often offers pre-technical assistance to communities, and since they did this report, it could be a nice way to pull them in to sort of take that next step and start doing a review of the table of uses.
Do you think it might be something where we could keep a rolling agenda item? What, until you get that report, or do you want to wait till...
Let's wait till I get some money to have somebody do it.
Alright.
There was one recommendation in here. I'm curious to hear your opinion on...
Oh, the decision part?
Yeah.
So, I think it's a great goal. Again, I am a, this is coming from somebody who worked in Westfield as a bigger community and had more staff. Northampton, so we, in my office, there's me who's full-time. I have a half-time assistant and a three-quarters time grant administrator who primarily works on CBGG projects. In Northampton, they have a director, they have somebody who works primarily with just the planning board in reviewing all of the development proposals. They have a conservation agent. They have, you know, CPA administrator. They have bigger staff and bigger capacity. So, I think it's great if I have the time and the capacity to put decisions together. And maybe for those bigger projects, it would make sense to do that. I don't think I necessarily have the time or capacity to do it for every single meeting and for every single...
Just for the cameras, can you tell us what it is you're, we're talking about here?
So this is the, the idea was preparing draft decisions with standard conditions and suggested additional conditions prior to the board even meeting. So, I don't really honestly feel comfortable about some of those additional conditions because that really comes out through the findings process of the board. If there was a list of standard conditions that you wanted on every single project, and some communities have, I'm not kidding, forty conditions attached to every permit, where twenty-five of them are standard. I'm not sure if you want to go that route. If so, then we should start, we should start by what are those standard conditions that you would want on every single permit, no matter who they are, what those conditions are. And then we can start drafting, attaching those as sort of standard conditions. And anything, anything above and beyond that would be additional conditions.
Yeah. I think it's, I think that there are a lot of other communities out there that have some sort of prepared decision language that is in writing before a meeting. It's not clear to me if it's always like a planning department draft or if it comes from the chair of the board, or I'm not even sure. But I do think there's a huge advantage to having something that is in writing, if it's feasible, because it's hard to, at least for me, it's hard to like, process when we're just making a bunch of conditions verbally in a meeting and then approving it in that same meeting. It feels hard for me to take in all of that information, make sure that everything is correct and as it should be, and then vote on it without seeing it written down.
So, so there's two ways to approach this. Hold on. So there's two things. You could either just continue every single decision so that, because I can't do findings, the conditions come out of the findings. I'm not going to put words in your mouth. I'm not going to draft a decision and tell you what, why these things are okay. I want you as a board to do that work on your own and come to those decisions on your own. I feel pretty strongly about that, that I will provide you guidance, I'll provide you technical memos, I will steer you. But I am not the planning board. I am the planning staff. You are the planning board, you are the decision makers. You need to make the decision, and you need to do your homework, and you need to understand. So, so it's hard to do to some extent because the findings and that section of the decision really comes out of your discussion. That language on why you find the traffic not to be an issue is based really on your conversation. So, it's hard, I don't want to put a draft decision together and say, I think the traffic is okay because of my preliminary meetings that I've had with applicants that is not on the record. Do you see where I'm getting at? It's a little bit...
I do think you do a really good job, and it's fairly recent, you know, maybe a year, year and a half, where you give us points to keep an eye out for, that are relevant, that have come up in discussion. And that, that part's very helpful. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
The thing that I have, when we do make conditions after the decision is made, and I do find it very hard to put in words sometimes how to make a decision. I know what I want from it, but when we do the conditions, if we were to make a list that everybody goes by, whether it be ten, fifteen, or twenty-five lists, no matter who you are or what you are, these are the things you have, we have to condition your project with. Who enforces those?
Well, it depends on what the conditions have.
The building inspector. Building inspector.
Who is retiring in two weeks.
Yeah, I know.
I'd like to make a comment, too, and it may be too late, we may have just missed it, I'm not sure. But when I went for my Level Two training at the Citizen Planner Training Conference, one of the courses was on drafting defensible decisions. I think that may have actually been the title. It was really quite helpful. And I don't know if anyone, I know you guys have been to a couple, but if anyone hasn't, those are great in helping to formalize the verbiage we need. It's not perfect.
So is another way to do it, to close the public hearing at a certain point and then just spend the next meeting...
So that would be the, yeah, so that would be, so you could, you would close, you would close the hearing, and then if it's a special permit, you have ninety days to render a decision after the close of the public hearing based on the state law. So, you could, you could close the hearing, I could draft a draft decision, provide that to the board for review, make sure that the conditions read the way that you want them to read, and then you vote on the decision at that meeting, and then it's finalized. And then, when that's the case, you know, whoever's chairing can sign that decision that day. And then I can timestamp it the next morning, and then it's, you know...
Yeah, I agree with that.
I would personally love to move to a model like that. I think it would make for much stronger, more defensible, more thoughtful decisions.
Right. And we wouldn't be with whoever's in, sitting there waiting for us. It's like, we're forcing ourselves to do this just to...
Teach somebody.
To make the decision and haphazardly give it to them. And then, all of a sudden, either a day or two or a week later, you're saying, wow, there should have been something else said or done.
So, so we just have to make sure that the process is correct because you can continue the public hearing, and then you could still have discussion, you could still take public comment. You know what I mean? You have to think, I guess it may depend, it might be a case-by-case basis on whether you want to just close the hearing and, and, or, you wouldn't, when you close the public comment. I have to go back.
Yeah, you have to make sure it's right, but I think in the class that I took, the recommendation was to like, end the public discussion.
You can end the public discussion, but you keep the hearing open so that the board can still deliberate.
Correct.
So you close the public comment period, keep the hearing open. That gives you the ability to deliberate and change the decision once you're looking at the draft.
Right.
So if that's the model you want to go, then we should, the board should come to agreement on that, and that would be the way that we do it. Because I need to know, I need to be able to tell applicants, this is how long it's actually going to take for you. When, because they're coming in with a business plan. And they need to sort of understand how the decision-making process fits into their decision, into their business plan. So, if that becomes a standard, it's fine, and I think it's great, and I think it actually is better, and it makes me feel better because then it makes me feel like the board is really doing their due diligence and their job in providing legally defensible decisions, which is really what you need to be doing.
And I think it would allow us to keep the public comment portion to one meeting, generally speaking, unless there was so much public comment that we had to continue it.
Sure, sure.
But we could do it in one meeting, and then that second meeting, which usually, it often takes two meetings, but there's often public comment in both meetings, which can, I think, actually slow us down.
Couldn't agree more.
And make it harder to make a thoughtful decision.
So, but keep in mind, it's hard for me to draft the decisions without some discussion by the board and finding. So you would need to take the public comment, and then still have...
Round them in discussion and then give it to you.
Exactly. Still have discussion, and then come back to that discussion to make sure that you, that you've got everything.
Right.
I think it's something we should do, and it seems like we have general consensus. Perhaps we can add it as an agenda item and have an official, because we need to let people have time, I think, to...
I don't think so. I don't think you need to have an official vote. If this is the way you want to conduct business, then we can just...
It's too bad that our chair is...
That's okay. I'm sure he would agree, actually. But he is an attorney, so...
He's going to tell the chair, he's going to run the meetings from now on.
Yeah, it's fine.
I personally would take it that way as long as everyone else agrees to it. Like you said, I don't think we need a vote, but it'd be good to get a consensus that if everyone's on the same page. And then we'll let Jesse know later.
Well, if we don't have to take a vote, then it's easy to let him know, and if he has a... Well, if we don't have to take a vote, then it's easy to let him know, and if he has to disagree, then...
Well, that's right.
Let us know, so there it is.
But if the majority of the board wants to conduct business this way, then this is the way that we'll do it.
Are there any dissenters to this right now, just so we know? There you have it.
Okay, alright, sounds good. So, that's how we'll do it from starting, moving forward.
You'll just check and make sure that we have the, the actual precise administrative steps are right.
Yeah, yeah, and I think if I can, and if it's something, if it's something easy like a, um, like a site plan approval, I'm just thinking like our downtown businesses that are trying to just, you know, they're just moving into an existing retail spot downtown. If I can try to get a preliminary done before that meeting for those smaller uses, then, you know, I'll do my best, and maybe it's just a matter of, the majority of it's done, I just have to fill in some blanks and we can be done the next, that I can do it the next day, rather than hold those, those uses up for two meetings, because those are much smaller. This is for the, more of the bigger stuff.
You could probably have a template for like downtown business that just, yeah.
I do, yeah.
Templates.
I have, I have, I definitely have a template, for sure.
So, in addition, at some point in the near future, there'll be an agenda item when the, uh, when the PVPC gets you some additional information on pricing, and we'll continue this discussion. This well-done report isn't just gonna go away.
Right.
Okay, good. Sign ordinance?
I didn't do, have an opportunity to work on it, I'm sorry.
Okay.
So, there's...
Well, we can do that discussion at the next meeting.
I can, I can try, I will try.
Alright, so we'll do that and keep it on here.
Um, yep, go ahead.
I don't have any, uh, board opinions or anything else, is there any administrative that you have?
Yeah, so the, um, the, the next meeting, um, Mount Tom Estates, which is on East Street, 311 East Street, they have submitted a letter for a, um, letter, to release the letter of credit, the performance guarantee for the property. So, the board is going to need to conduct a site visit for that business. The question is, does the board wanna conduct, conduct a site visit prior to the next meeting on the eighteenth? Or do you wanna wait to hear from the applicant first and then conduct a site visit?
Is the reason we might wait because they might not be at the meeting, or you're thinking...
No, I'm just asking the boards, what the board's preference would be, whether you wanna hear from the applicant first before you conduct a site visit, or would you like to conduct site visits on your own? Or do you want me to try to schedule one with the applicant themselves?
I say beforehand, anyone else?
Is that the one by Parnes Street?
I'm sorry?
Is that the one by Parnes Street?
311 East Street, so it's Mount Tom Estates.
It's past Parsons Street.
Past Parsons.
From Clark.
It's across the street from the, from the farm, kinda near the church.
I mean, it'd be helpful...
Tucked in, just past.
Oh, okay, that's, yeah.
Cool Legs Development.
By Burt's.
I mean, if we had, if I had the information for, for whatever the request is, and maybe your preliminary stuff that you give out, that would be enough fuel for me to know what I'm looking for while I'm in there. So, if we did it beforehand, would we be having access to that stuff?
Um, yes, I can, what I can do is I will pull a copy of the decision of, it's a seventy-five thousand dollar letter of credit, so I can give you the decision of what the seventy-five thousand dollars is to cover. And I can try to find, this is old stuff, this is an old development, so I don't know what I have digitally. That's part of the problem, I think most of the stuff I have, I mean, I can send you what they, what I, what they sent is actually already in the Dropbox folder for the next meeting, so that information's already in there. So, if you wanna access the Dropbox, there's a site plan in there, there's a letter of credit in there, uh, request, and there's other stuff, I'm pretty sure.
We, we had a walkthrough there about, twice, six years ago, where it was.
So, should we try to schedule that now?
Yeah. You guys in agreement?
My phone.
I already, I already walked through the thing once.
Ninety, my own calendar, but...
Uh, you said the meeting was on the eighteenth?
It's on the eighteenth, so it's next Tuesday, uh, two Tuesdays from now, so, I wanna do like a...
Do you give a couple of dates, because the applicant will have some input on whether the dates are accessible? Or does an intelligent applicant say yes to whatever the thing would?
That's what I'm saying, we could go either way, if you want to, you could, you could go on your own, I can send you the information, I could put it in the Dropbox, and you can go on your own, and be prepared for the next meeting on the eighteenth. That's one option.
If we go on our own, though, don't we have to warn the applicant that people are gonna be wandering the property?
I can let them know that planning board members will be going on their own, I mean, it's, it's a...
I think I'd like the developer to be there, so that...
They may think that we're customers.
Okay, they might think you're customers, there is a unit for sale. So, um, so, Saturday mornings, or, I mean, that seems to be...
Yeah, okay.
Usually the mornings are good.
What's the Saturday before the eighteenth, anyone?
The fifteenth.
There you go, Saturday the fifteenth.
Okay, so October fifteenth, what time works for everybody? You want a morning or an afternoon, or?
Morning for me, get it out of the way.
Yep, like, ten, nine?
Doesn't matter.
Earlier the better for me. I like doing stuff.
How about you guys down there at the other end of the table?
Whatever's convenient for everybody else.
Nine?
Let's do nine.
Nine, Jim, nine, okay, I'll see if they're available on October fifteenth at nine AM.
Would you please send an email to the board reminding them of this?
Yes.
Specifically me.
Yes.
Thank you most. Any other administrative items?
No, that's it.
Okay. Uh, I think that's it, is there a motion to adjourn?
You've got it, if you have a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, everyone.